Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing session for January 24th. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Zepone is absent.
Thank you. Councilmember Zepone is testifying at a legislative committee right now, virtually, in support of more money for cities for sheltering during extreme weather events, which would be very relevant to us. So we hope he'll be able to join us before the meeting's over. Mr. Perkins, I understand that you are going to be leading the briefing today, and we started out with a very easy one for you for January 31st.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Council President, members of the city council. Item one is the purchase order with Life Assist for EMS medical supplies, and Mike Lopez is going to provide the briefing.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, Council President Beggs and members of the city council. My name is Mike Lopez, and I'm the Integrated Medical Services Manager for the Spokane Fire Department. For you today is a five-year value blanket purchase order with Life Assist out of Chelmsford, Massachusetts. Fire Department worked closely with city purchasing to draft specifications for an RFP that was conducted in December of 2021. There were two fully responsive bidders, Life Assist and Boundtree, with Life Assist being the low bidder. Contract is for EMS medical supplies for the fire department with an estimated annual expenditure of $230,000, including tax. We're asking for your support and approval to proceed finalizing contract with Life Assist. Thank you for your time and considerations, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Item two, contract extension with Passport Labs for mobile pay-by-phone parking services. And Justin, Justine Ray is going to give us the briefing. But I don't see her on the call. Oh, there she is.
She's on mute.
All right. I've, I've heard that Justin is on, but she can't hear, she doesn't have any sound. So why don't we move on, and we'll come back to her.
All right. Thank you, Council President. Item three, an amendment contract with Sean Cole Construction for the remodel of the Gardner Investigative Building, and Major Mike McNabb is going to provide the briefing.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Council President, City Council, good afternoon. Earlier this year, you approved a contract with Sean Cole, you approved a SBO to give us funds to access money to do a remodel on the Gardner Building. That original contract with Sean Cole Construction was $47,000. We've had $7,000 in overages. Most of that was due to, one, an oversight, and, two, increases to cost of materials due to the supply chain. Some doors and windows went up quite a bit with an increase of $7,000, taking the contract over $50,000 to a total of $54,460. So we just, since it's over the $50,000 threshold, now we need you to approve the contract.
Thank you, Major. Hearing no questions, maybe I'll go back to Justin again and Justine again and see if she's able to hear us now. Maybe not.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you. You are on for Passport Labs Mobile Pay by Phone Parking Services.
Perfect. So thank you for having me today. The contract before you is a contract extension with Passport Labs for mobile pay-by-phone payment, which is for $40,000. This is our last renewal, which is for six months, so this will take us to August 1st, 2022. And we currently pay the transaction fees, which are 10 cents per transaction, and so that's what this is for. Does anyone have any questions?
Council President here, Justin, and just wondering what the plan is going forward, since this is the last extension.
So that's a great question. We put out RFP last fall for multiple apps, and so to have one integrator and multiple partners. And so we put that out and are moving forward with the contracts for that next. So Park Mobile was chosen as the integrator. We plan on having Passport as a partner if they would like to stay with us, and then adding additional apps as we go along. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ray. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next up, items four and five are standard items on the agenda. Number four is the report on pending claims and payments for Parks and Library. The blanks currently on the agenda will be completed next week for the January 31, 2022 council meeting. And item number five is a placeholder for council meeting minutes. That will also be completed with the date January 31, 2022, at the next council meeting. And then, and then finally, boards and commission appointments, just noted, Park Board has two reappointments, and the Planning Commission has two appointments. And I believe, Council President, that's all I have on the advanced agenda for January 31.
That is, is there a motion to approve the advanced agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, advanced agenda is approved. Given that there is really no business, other than the appointments at the legislative session and proclamation or two coming up, I'm looking for a motion to move our legislative session to our 3:30 session on January 31st.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I've got no, no issues moving that up, but a couple of things. One is, there was going to be a proclamation regarding the Lunar New Year red at that meeting, and so I don't know if, if we want to read that at the 3:30 or not.
Yep. We're planning, we're planning on reading that at the 3:30, yes, for sure.
And then, and then I was wondering if you had an update, because it may change whether or not I would like to maybe make a motion to defer one week on the bridge funding, if there's any advancement on discussions with Gonzaga.
No, I don't have, I've been in text and email contact with them, but the person I needed to talk to was out of the office so far. So, no, I don't have an update on that.
Okay.
But still pursuing that. Any other questions or comments about moving the legislative agenda to 3:30 on the 31st? All right, seeing none? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, that is moved and will be so noted.
Council President.
Yeah. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would make a motion to defer one week the consideration of the bridge ARPA funding, so that there can be some additional discussion with Gonzaga.
Okay, that is.
Second.
Councilmembers are referring to special budget ordinance, C36. Oh, let's see.
167.
167. C36167. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Stratton.
I have a quick question. Is now the time to ask, or do I need to wait?
Nope, now's the time to ask.
Can somebody give me just a quick overview of what the discussion with Gonzaga is about, and how that would change this?
Yeah, so the discussion with Gonzaga is about any funds they might dedicate to the process, but it's, it's not a, it's not a, I don't, what do I want to say? It's not a formal, it's, it's me reaching out to them and saying, they, in the past, they've said they might participate at a smaller level, according to the Parks Department. And Councilmember Cathcart asked me if we might be able to get them to a bigger amount, and so thus reduce the amount of money that we would need for ARPA. I don't know that if we approve this amount, I don't know that that gets in the way of further negotiations, because the amount to repair the bridge is, is more than this amount, but, but that's, Councilmember Cathcart's concern, I think. I mean, I'll let him speak to that. But that, that's what the issue is, is whether or not, I believe, Ms., Councilmember Cathcart would vote for it, depending on whether or not Gonzaga was participating in how much. So, but I'll let him speak to that. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah. Yeah, my, my thought had been that this, this bridge, you know, is a, a big amenity for the Gonzaga campus and the U District area as a whole, and I just felt that there should probably be a little bit more skin in the game from, from those folks in terms of funding this. And I have no problems with us using some, some dollars to, to fund this. I mean, I know we've got some grant money that's going to run out, but I just feel like the, the, the community that it serves specifically should have a little bit more skin in the game.
Other commentary? Councilmember Kinnear.
I do. Thanks. So, I was on the Friends of Centennial Board for quite a while, and this was a discussion there. And the executive director at the time approached Gonzaga, didn't get very far. She had a lot of good contacts with Gonzaga, as I'm sure you do, Council President, and Mr. Jones, probably as well. They were not interested in participating in funding the bridge at that time. I'm not sure what's going to change, but this is such an important bridge. If we don't fix it, it will be closed, and I don't think anybody wants that. So I don't want to strong-arm our universities into paying for this when we do have the dollars to do so. And if you are up on what's going on and reading news, you know that universities are struggling right now because attendance is way down. So the last thing I want to do is stress out our universities any more than they already are. So I'm hopeful, I mean, you can give it a shot, Mr. Council President, but we had no luck prior. I can't imagine what's changed.
All right, I say Councilmember Bingle, then Cathcart, then Stratton. Councilmember Bingle.
Thank you. I, I don't, I don't think it's a matter of strong-arming at all. I think you just, oftentimes, you don't have if you don't ask, and so I think it's worth at least the conversation and giving the Council President an opportunity to meet with them, because it is going to be, you know, of, of great service to the population of Gonzaga and to the students there, particularly, you know, in the Logan neighborhood. And so I think it's at, at least worth an ask. Nobody denies that the Cardon Bridge needs to be redone and replaced. We're just, you know, if we can defer and see if they can, you know, if they're willing to chip in some dollars that they might not have been done before, then I think it's worth the conversation.
Okay. Councilmember Stratton.
But nothing says that they can't contribute down the road if, if we get this approved. And I'm thinking as a benefit to the neighborhood and to that area, it's a beautiful bridge. If we can get this approved, then there's nothing there that says they can't come on and contribute after the fact, right, Gonzaga?
You are correct. Councilmember Stratton, and then, and then Garrett Jones. I mean, I said, Councilmember Cathcart, and then Garrett Jones.
Yeah, so, so my, in, in the big picture, my, my concern is, you know, there's a lot of needs in District One in particular, and I'm, I'm sort of sitting back and I'm watching, you know, we've allocated about 14 million, we've got another tranche that we're going to allocate, and I know there's a lot of other needs too in, in the city, and I'm slowly seeing this money getting allocated away, and there's yet to be any direct allocation into District One. This would be, obviously, this is a bridge in District One, but I'm trying to weigh this with all the other needs and priorities from, you know, what we're trying to do at the Hilliard Library, in the Northeast Community Center, NEPDA. I mean, there's a lot of needs and, and wants in terms of these dollars, and I'm trying to figure out what are the highest priorities, and if we can, even a few more dollars from other sources, those could be a few more dollars that go to some really important needs in, in Northeast with these ARPA dollars. So that's kind of where I'm coming at with this. No doubt this bridge needs to get done, 100% agree. I'm just trying to look at it from the perspective of the ARPA dollars.
All right, Garrett.
Thank you. So, quick question to Council President. This is for approval though this week on the 24th agenda, correct? Not the advanced 31st agenda?
Yes, it is on tonight's agenda.
Okay. All right, perfect. It's getting a little confused there. One question to just answer some of what staff has been doing, too, is now that there's the momentum to be able to fund the bridge as full, we're re-engaged now with the U District in a commitment of 70,000, and previously Gonzaga was in the neighborhood of 35,000 with our contacts when we were designing the project. I don't know, too, if within some type of motion, there'd be able, opportunity, if this funding came in, and at the end of the project, we did have a surplus, then this could be reallocated to other city priorities. Since this won't be funds transferred into the parks, we'll just be drawing from the funds in the ARPA budget. So if there's an opportunity there with still engaging in the conversations that we're having with the U District and universities, anything above and beyond would just be reallocated to another project.
Yeah, that, that's my thought as well, is that right now is the time to get, go to bid on this and try to get the best prices that we can, and it doesn't preclude us from getting more money. And if we don't use all the ARPA money, we can spend the ARPA money in other places. So I'm opposed to the deferral, even though it's just a week. I, I have no confidence that we would get something all negotiated out in that week anyway. And I think the negotiations will be more effective if it's not perceived as we're just waiting on them for, for that, but that's just my opinion. Councilmember Bingle.
Sorry, one last quick thought. As we were looking into this, into this project, I was just looking at if this is something that we can use ARP dollars on. If this project was started before ARP dollars were, were approved and sent out, my understanding is that if a project had begun before ARP dollars had been allocated to the cities, that we could not use ARP dollars for those projects. But that's probably my last question on it. I don't want us to get into a legal situation where we've committed to this, and now the city's on the hook for a million and a half.
Yeah, so without answering that question exactly, the money for this was really coming from lost revenue dollars for the city, which doesn't have any ARPA eligibility, as long as we can document the lost dollars. And so, so I, I don't think that's relevant for this, as long as we are clear that it's lost revenues from the city, as opposed to one of the six ARPA buckets. But that is, before we spend any ARPA money, we have a elaborate eligibility process going, so it's a great point to bring up.
Council President, I think Matt Boston had his hand up to speak.
All right. Matt Boston.
It was just, it was, it was just what Council President was saying. Yeah, this would be within the, the revenue replacement component of the ARPA funds, which is, we have a max contribution for that for up to roughly $21 million that can go for general city services and spends, of which this would fall into.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so would the pumper trucks also be from revenue replacement if, if indeed it does come out of ARPA?
I believe so, but I will defer to if either Matt Boston or...
That's correct.
That is correct.
Okay.
So, and that's the other part of my, my overall concern in terms of priorities, is, you know, we're, we're limited to about 21 million in revenue replacement. We've already allocated 14. This is a million and a half. Pumper trucks are three and a half. You're, you're getting down to pennies, and that is literally the only source of funding for the NEPDA, is going to be revenue replacement dollars. So I'm, I'm trying to look at all of these things, and I'm not sure that we're accounting for all of that, and so that's definitely a big concern of mine, is that, is there going to not be any money left to support the Northeast Public Development Authority?
So ju- just to clarify, it, the, of the 14 million that has been allocated, all of that is not in revenue replacement at the time. So only, I think, oh, gosh, rough numbers, if, if I were to guess right now, is about a million that's in the revenue replacing category. Everything else falls into the direct community impact of COVID, of COVID, COVID impact and fighting the, the response to COVID.
Okay, that, that's helpful, because I think the resolution from when we passed that, when I read it, it, it came across to me like we were specifying that these were revenue replacement. So that, that's helpful, Matt, thank you.
You bet.
All right. Super great questions as we become masters of ARPA at Spokane City Council, so it's good, it'll get better. Any other commentary, questions on the motion to defer the special budget ordinance for one week? All right. Seeing none? All those in favor of deferral, say aye, and maybe raise your hand at the same time.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I see two. All those opposed, nay? One, two, three, four. Okay. Motion to defer does not pass, so that's still on for tonight. Let's move, though, because we had a holiday last Monday. We get to, Mr. Perkins gets to brief the consent and the legislative agenda. Back to you, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Council President. This is the advanced agenda for this evening, or today, Monday, January 24th. Item number one is the support of the Corcoran Basin project with some piping, and Kyle Tuig is going to provide us with the briefing.
Good afternoon, city council members. Item 1A is the proposed low-big contract with H.C. Fowler of Spokane Valley, Washington, for $282,472. This is for 60-inch ductile iron fittings, 36-inch and 48-inch HDPE stormwater pipe. These materials are being ordered in advance of the TJ Minock project as, because they have very, very long lead times. Three bids are received. H.C. Fowler was about 19% lower than the second bid. And item 1B is the proposed contract with Corin Maine of Spokane Valley for $704,690. This is for 60-inch ductile iron pipe, and is actually a replacement of the siphon that goes underneath TJ Minock Boulevard. As with the previous item, this has a very, very long lead time, and we're getting it going in advance of the TJ Minock project, so we're ready to go this summer. All these materials are paid for from the project funds, which is a mix of state grants, low-interest loans, and some local funds. Any questions on either of those items? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Tuig. Appreciate that. Item 2ABC is equipment for technology services, hardware and software, and Dusty Patrick is going to provide the briefing. Mr. Patrick.
Good afternoon, city council. Before you is a value blanket renewal. A is for CDW for technology equipment, asking for $120,000. Item B is value blanket with Dell for laptop, monitors, docks, ink toner, mobile data hardware, computer equipment, the value of $750,000. And item number C is through Software House International, SHI, also for software products and professional services, maintenance and support, subscriptions, upgrades, and the amount of $650,000. Are there any questions over any of those? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Item three is a renewal with Galls for police jumpsuits, and Michelle Lox is going to give us the briefing. Michelle?
Good afternoon, council members. The Spokane Police Department is requesting approval to renew our value blanket with Galls LLC for our police jumpsuits for the years '21 and '22. We have an estimated value of $150,000 per year, which includes alterations and tax on those. This is standard police uniforms.
All right, thank you, Michelle. Item four is a cooperative agreement with medical services staffing, the Spokane Valley Fire Department, and Fire Chief Brian Schaefer.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is a request to continue a cooperative agreement under the RCW that allows governments to work together in, in a period to accomplish a certain task. In this case, we are providing oversight and quantitative analysis to the emergency medical system in Spokane Valley, and we bill them. We expect a revenue of $318,000 for that service. Can I answer any questions or clarify any details of that? Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, chief. Item five, two-year contract extension with absolute drug testing. Howard Delaney will provide the briefing. Howard.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council members. This is a two-year contract extension with absolute drug testing, who handles our random drug and alcohol testing for both the therapeutic courts and the Alpha Municipal Court dockets. It's very important for us to be able to, when required, have people randomly tested for both alcohol and drugs, given how substances tend to drive misdemeanor crime in the city. Is there any questions about this extension? Total amount, $65,000. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Item six, a request for two projects to receive a multifamily housing property tax exemption, and Terry Stripes will provide that briefing.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Council members and Council President, we last saw this, these proposals back at Urban Experience on January 10th. Is it okay if I run a PowerPoint presentation for you back-to-back on the two projects, or would you like a little separation between?
No, go ahead and do them both.
Okay? So with multifamily tax exemption, what are we trying to accomplish? With this incentive, we are... With this incentive, we are trying to encourage more multifamily housing in specific target areas that is, that also includes affordable housing. This is to stimulate the construction of new family housing in existing or underutilized buildings or build new projects. It is to increase the supply of mixed-income housing opportunities throughout the city. It helps us accomplish our goals under the Growth Management Act. It also promotes community development, neighborhood revitalization, and the availability of affordable housing. It also works with other incentive programs like historic preservation to protect historic structures and help protect that neighborhood character. It also needs to align with where we have our current transit system. This project on the foothills, the foothills application, they've applied for 24 units at 519 East North Foothills Drive, save that, save that hallway. This property is owned, general commercial 70-foot, which means it's general commercial, but it also has the centers and corridors overlay, so the design standards and centers and corridors will apply. The estimated construction cost for this project is approximately $7.5 million. It is located in the Logan neighborhood. This is the preliminary site plan. Remember, with multifamily tax exemption, you're seeing this conditional application. A project has to apply for multifamily tax exemption before they can apply for a building permit. Then, once the project is constructed, then they finalize the project, and they file for a final certificate, which begins the exemption. The next project is also in Council District 1. It is Liberty Park 2. It is also 24 units. It's located at 3027 East Liberty. It is general commercial 70-foot, but this does not have the centers and corridors overlay, so general commercial development standards will apply. The estimated cost is $2.5 million, and it's located in the Bemis neighborhood. Both of these projects are in District 1, and so Councilmember Cathcart is our council sponsor on these. This is the preliminary site plan. It's one building, three stories. Any questions?
I have a question, Terry, not so much about these specific plans, but the process of kind of doing a preliminary application, then building it, and then doing a final contract. If the rules on MFTE change in between that preliminary approval and then the final contract, is the law that was in place when the preliminary, does that control, or does the new law control?
We have a little bit of flexibility. So from the conditional to the final, if they finalize under what would be the new rule, I mean, if they build the project that would qualify under the new rules, they could choose to finalize under the new rules. However, they can finalize under their conditional contract rules. Does that answer the question?
So it's their choice, not the city's choice, which scheme they finalize under?
Well, it could be a little bit of both, but it's a matter of which makes the most sense for the finalized project. So, for example, we don't accept conditional applications for any projects that are not within the boundary, so that would not be something. But when we have a project where they may be filed for a conditional eight-year, but then they could possibly go with a 12-year affordable unit when they finalize, because it's so preliminary, we try to build that flexibility into it to help the applicant do the best project.
Yeah, my question is slightly different and not relevant to these projects, so I hope the owners aren't nervous about it. But if we made it more challenging to get to the 12-year, or even more challenging to qualify for the eight-year, in between the time...
They would likely finalize under this.
Okay. But would this, my question is, could the city require them to finalize under the new? That's my question, I guess.
Not once you've approved the conditional contract.
Great. That answers my question. Thank you.
Were there other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Stripes. Appreciate that. Oh, there is one more question, sorry.
So what portion of the projects has to be affordable housing to qualify for an MFTE?
This project is finalizing under the eight-year program, and the eight-year program does not have an affordability component. It's market. Does that answer that question?
All right, Ms. Stripes, thank you very much. Item 7, amendment to the City and County Memorandum Agreement for Wastewater Treatment Charges and Payments. Our Public Works Director, Marlene Feist.
Good afternoon, everyone. So this is a five-year extension of our memorandum of agreement with Spokane County to pay for charges to treat the county's wastewater at our Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility. So this is a second amendment to a revised contract between the city and the county that was approved in 2013. It extended the terms of the last amendment through 2021 and starts the new approach, slightly revised approach, to paying for those services in 2022.
All right. Thank you, Marlene. Item 8A and B are claims and payments for parks and library with the amounts filled in, and item 8C is payroll claims, where an amount is filled in. Item 9 is city council meeting minutes for January 6th and January 10th.
And then I suggest we do the briefing for proposed additions, items 10, 11, and 12.
All right, I will continue on. Thank you, Council President. Item 10, it's a contract with Serum Networks for Cisco Calling Contact Center and Maintenance Support, and Dusty Patrick will provide the briefing for us on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. As stated, this is a five-year contract with Serum Networks for Cisco Calling Contact Center and Calibrio Support and Maintenance from January 20th of this year through January 19th of 2027. This will be billed annually, $137,221.58 plus tax, for a total of $686,107.88. Are there any questions I can answer at this time?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Item 11, contract amendment with Beth Canar and the Summit Law Group for Collective Bargaining. City Attorney Mike Ormsby.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins and members of the council. This is a proposed amendment to our current contract with Summit Law Group, who provides collective bargaining assistance on police matters. Beth both provides legal advice and is also sitting at the table for both discussions with the guild and with captains and lieutenants. And on the fire side, with Local 29 and Sappho, she provides background legal advice. As the council will hear later, as we discuss bargaining for this year, all four of those contracts are currently in the process of being negotiated and are going to be time-consuming, so we're asking to extend this contract for the remainder of this year to cover service on those contracts. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just wondering, these additional expenses, were these planned for, or are these new expenses that we didn't plan for in the current budget?
No, they're, good question. First of all, I'm sorry that we're bringing this now. We've had some mix-up and confusion with communication with the county, not their fault. And so we knew we were going to have to bring this contract to the council, but it happened suddenly, and that's partly because we were able to schedule negotiation sessions with these labor groups all in the next couple of weeks. So it was an expected expense, but we should have brought this to the council two or three weeks ago, and that's my fault that we didn't, but it is an expected expense.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ormsby. Don't go away. Item 12, contract amendment with Tom McLean, who represents the city in an arbitration matter.
Yes. The council's probably aware of this, covered in the press. Chief Mydl terminated one of our police officers for certain conduct. That was appealed by the officer to an arbitrator. The arbitration ended up being longer and more complicated than was anticipated. The city ended up prevailing in the arbitration, but the fees were greater than our initial contract, so we're asking that we increase that contract amount so that we can pay what we expect the bill that we will receive from our council to be. This will more than cover that, but it's an additional $20,000 for a total cost of $70,000 for the arbitration.
And, Mr. Perkins, we just heard about item 13, A through C, so I don't know that we need to repeat what we heard at committee, but if there's any additional information that Michelle wants to provide us, go ahead, Michelle, and then people may still have questions for you, even though we talked about it earlier.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Perkins. So the first item is basically the contract to guardians that provide from December 26th to January 9th. The final billing came in at $136,481.70. When we put in the paperwork, we put in an estimated cost based off of a previous estimate that was a lot higher, so it came in about $50,000 slower. The second item is for the same service of 12:26 to January 9th for custodial services. So this is IFS, provided custodial services to clean the facility every night, disinfect, spray, and do everything due to the higher pretensions because of the COVID. And that contract, the hard cost of $40,246.43. The last one is with the PFD, and that is for the Public Facilities District, which is for the rental of the facility, and then an estimated cost of $110,000 in there for repairs to the facility. So the hard cost is $65,803.55 for space rental. The items for repairs, which we have requested additional invoices to itemize those repairs, are being finalized, and we estimate it to be around $110. Is there any questions?
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you, Michelle. So I just want to be really clear. We're not talking about allocating any money today. We're talking about writing up a contract that we can actually pay these folks for the work, because the SBO has not come before us for that amount. So these are contracts only, which are the first step in the payment.
That is correct. The ability to enter into the contract with these people, get it all signed, and then when they present us with final invoices, which I have two of the three, they can be paid immediately for services that have already been rendered, and try not to prolong it. These three contracts here come in under, well, not all three of them, if you exclude the PFD one, I can actually have, I actually have enough budget to pay the other two right now.
Thank you, Michelle.
Any other questions?
Other questions? Okay. All right. Let's just continue on with the briefing, and then we'll come back and decide about adding things to the agenda or not.
All right. Thank you, Council President. Following my scorecard here, the next item I have is a special budget ordinance. I know it looked like there was a brief discussion about this a few moments ago on the American Rescue Plan and the funding for the Don Cardong Pedestrian Bridge. And Mr. Jones is here, our Parks and Recreation Director, to provide a briefing or answer any more questions. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Perkins and council. So yeah, again, this is one of our four city-owned pedestrian bridges along the Centennial Trail. Don Cardong Bridge approximately has over 160,000 users use this bridge each year, and has not seen any significant upgrades rather than, other than routine maintenance since the early 1990s when the bridge was constructed. It has been on our radar. We have applied for grants, so totaling private and state dollars to the state at $800,000. And then we estimate this bridge to cost $2.25 million, with a delta of the $1.45 million. Despite the significant grand dollars securing the necessary local match with the pandemic, we've had to be able to defer all capital projects during that time with the net revenue loss approximately of $1.6 million, with our annual capital budget in Parks and Recreation approximately being $1 million. As a result of that, we did work with the state to give us their final extension, so this project will have to go under construction this year to maintain those grant dollars, and then also giving us the ability, that's why we're asking for the ARPA dollars as that revenue replacement, so it gives us the ability to also maintain and repair other park capital projects in our system in 2022 and beyond. Without this funding, we would be at risk to be able to continue our normal capital plan within Parks and Recreation and in our neighborhood parks. With that, is there any additional questions?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next up is an emergency ordinance related to the adaptation of the reuse of historic properties, and I have Mr. Brian McClatchy to give that briefing.
Thank you. I think there might be a motion on this. This has been briefed previously, it has been deferred previously, as we continue to work with the administration to see when we can, when they will be able to work on the matter, discuss the matter. Councilmember, will presently have a motion.
So I do have a motion to defer this till February 21st. It was a request by administration for the new planning director to take part in this, and so I'd like to make that motion to be deferred till February 21st.
Can you make it the 28th? We don't have a meeting on the 21st.
Let's make it the 28th, then.
All right.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion is second, to defer to the 28th. Any discussion? Councilmember Cathcart.
Just wondering from Councilman Wilkerson, in your conversations, do you get the feeling that we're going to actually vote on this come February 28th? Or is this just one more in a series of delays? I know we've delayed it a number of times, and it'd be nice to get this thing over the finish line.
That is my wish, Councilmember Cathcart. But out of respect for the new planning director, I was going to give this extension, but we'd like to see some decision on the 28th. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of deferring to February 28th, indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, it's deferred to the 28th.
All right. Thank you, Council President. Next up is resolutions. The first one is approving a settlement agreement of all claims of Tricia and Cory Christian, and the city attorney is going to provide that briefing.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins and councilmembers. This is a case that arose out of an automobile accident involving then-employee of code enforcement that was in an auto accident. The, one of the passengers in the car was hurt very seriously. We went to a mediation with renowned Spokane mediator Frank Hoover, and were able to settle this case within our settlement authority that was granted by the mayor. And so we would recommend that the council approve this settlement of $195,000, and that'll be a full release of all claims and a dismissal of the lawsuit. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Ormsby. Next up in our resolutions is the appointment of Spencer Gardner as Planning Services Director, and Megan Stain Olsen is here to provide any briefing.
Good afternoon. Yes, I'm bringing forward the appointment of Spencer Gardner as Planning Services Director. I wanted to provide a brief overview of the recruitment process. We went out three times recruiting for this position, and in this final recruitment, which was successful, we posted that October 6th of 2021. It closed November 1st. We received nine applications. Seven of those applicants met the minimum qualifications. Through a resume review process, two candidates were selected for interviews. However, only one candidate, Mr. Gardner, participated in those interviews, and we are bringing him forward as the mayor's appointment for Planning Services Director.
Thank you, Miss Stain Olsen. I appreciate that. I will not last, but our next resolution is expressing the intent of the City Council to designate a multifamily tax exemption residential targeted area. Terry Stripes.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Thank you, Council President and Councilmembers. I would like to make note at the beginning of this presentation that there was a spokesman review article over the weekend. The article was good, but the very last line of the article misstated the hearing date that we're looking at creating. The hearing will be scheduled for February 14th as this moves forward. So just make note of that. So we are entering into a process to update the multifamily tax exemption boundary. Because of the shortage of housing in Spokane, we're taking this interim step to bring back the Garland District into the multifamily tax exemption boundary and fix the boundary challenge that we had at the south end of the University District. I won't go back over the purposes of the multifamily tax exemption program because we just did that when we talked about those new projects coming online. We're talking about adding this thatched area that goes from the end of the North Monroe Boundary, captures the residential multifamily property, continuing up the hill on Monroe to the Garland area, and then captures the properties where multifamily tax exemption can be utilized and where multifamily housing can be built in the Garland area. Down at the University District, which is the little map on the right, we're adding in a little bit of the high industrial area that we missed when the update was done back in 2017. This is how the map would then look. We're adding a little bit up here, north of Monroe for Garland area. We're adding a little bit down in the South University District, right down there near the bend in the river. When we're adding this residential target area for Garland District, we're adding just over 45 acres. For the University District, we're adding just over 25 acres. This will bring the new residential target area total to just under 5,000 acres. The process and timeline. We were at Urban Experience on January 10th. Today is the 24th. We're here for the resolution. Resolution sets the advertising clock and the ordinance for hearing in February. January 31st, we'll be back to brief on the first reading of the ordinance. On January 7th, we'll begin that hearing process. And then on January 14th will be your second reading of the ordinance and your public hearing, and then the ordinance would go into effect 30 days later. And that is what I have. Do you have questions for me? Thank you. You did hear that presentation, correct?
We did. Thank you.
Yes.
No, it's very exciting.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Perkins, let's go ahead and brief Chris Smith's appointment.
Thank you. Again, I will turn it back over to Megan Stain Olsen for the briefing of Chris Smith as the Human Resources Director.
Thank you, Johnny. Yes, Chris Smith is the mayor's appointee for the Director of Human Resources. We only went at one time to recruit for this position. It was posted October 11th and closed November 1st. We received 35 applicants, and 15 of them met the minimum qualifications. Five candidates were advanced for interviews, and Chris Smith was selected unanimously. Any questions?
Councilmember Stratton.
Thank you, Megan, and thank you also for including councilmembers, giving us that opportunity to meet Chris and chat with her. I was very, very impressed. My only question is, I know that she does not live in the Spokane area. Are there plans for her to be in Spokane? Or is she going to be living outside of Spokane and working? Do we know that?
Mr. Perkins may have had that conversation with her. My understanding is that she would be on site. The human resources staff have been physically on site the last two years, so there might be a teleworking arrangement on a hybrid basis, but my understanding is that she will be physically in Spokane.
So hopefully she'll relocate here and be part. Okay, that's great.
If I might, just to follow up, Councilmember Stratton, yes, the intent of Ms. Smith and her family is to relocate here, keep the place they have in the other city community, but relocate here to be here as a full-time employee for the city of Spokane.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Bingle.
Hey, sorry. I don't know if anybody called me. Yeah, okay. What was the criteria for advancing people of the 15 that met the requirements into the five that got the interviews? What was that criteria to advance them from the 15 to five? How did we select those five?
It was just based on level of HR experience. Most of those five that advanced, they did have a public sector human resources background. Public sector and private sector human resources are two very different, it's just two very different fields. And so the city did desire to have somebody that is accustomed to the government environment, which we have to operate within a lot more rules and constraints and guidelines than the private sector.
All right. Back to you, Mr. Perkins, for the last bit.
Thank you, Council President. The final item is a first reading ordinance, and it is a street vacation. I'll turn it over to Eldon Brown.
Good afternoon, Council. Hopefully you can see the map up there, but the applicant's requesting the vacation of Perry Street between Hartson. See if I can bring it down here a little bit. Between Hartson and Celesta. And there, the goal is to build some affordable housing. I think there was 30 additional multifamily affordable housing units is the goal of the project. The applicant does have property on both sides of the street. They have Liberty Park Apartments on the east side, and they want to expand across this right-of-way to build on the right-of-way and into the undeveloped lots on the west side. So we've looked at that. We do not have any city utilities, nor any other fiber or any other utilities in that Perry Street. So we are not requesting reservation of any easements. I did have an inquiry on Friday from a property owner, if you can see my arrow up there, north of Celesta Avenue. Property owner that lives on Fifth Avenue was concerned about this project possibly creating any type of sewer issues to their house to the north. The intent of this project would be to extend utilities down to Hartson Avenue to the south, both for sewer and water. And so we should have really no utility impacting anything to the north. So I communicated that with the property owner, and I think they were happy to hear that. So I'm not sure if they'll be here to testify tonight or not, but that was kind of the gist of the conversation I was having with them. Anyway, we would recommend approval of this vacation subject to conditions. One of the conditions that popped up after we'd already developed the report is we were requesting that the applicant pay $62,418.97 for the unimproved land value of that right-of-way. The applicant did request through a memo, I think to the council back on December 11th for a no-cost vacation based on the Affordable Housing Act. And so I thought I better bring that up at this point in time and see how the council feels about that, because right now the condition is that they pay us $62,400, but they have requested a no-cost vacation. So we would recommend approval of such conditions, and we just need to decide what that condition is. So be happy to answer any questions about it.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so I guess, well, two questions. One is for that homeowner to the north. I know they had said that just some previous work that had been done in the area caused some issues with their utilities. And I don't know if that specifically got fixed back when it occurred or not. But just to confirm, though, that there is no work that would be done that would potentially impact them?
From this project, that's correct, yes.
Okay. And then my second is, I guess, if the question is this should be or potentially be a no cost, I don't know. Do we have established criteria that we use for that? I know, you know, we have, like in the NEPDA with some of those really old parcels and things, there are some old provisions that allow us to do some no-cost vacations. But in this case, do we have anything in code that lays out when we would allow for a no cost and under what circumstances?
I think the council actually has provisions under any circumstance to actually not charge that request. But to answer your question directly, I'm not sure we have a real defined set of criteria other than just if you're building affordable housing, and the council can foresee that this is truly a public benefit in that regard. Why, we have did this before, where we've actually got council approval to forgive that fee.
It might be in our packets. I just don't have it open in front of me. But do we know exactly how many units and at what level of affordability they're going to be that would be going in there?
I do not know that.
It's pretty low income. So these tend to be refugee families in this particular project. It's a nonprofit owner, and they operate supported housing. Eldon? Quick question. If we wanted to release the condition of payment, do we need to do that tonight? And if so, what do you need from that?
I would think I would just need a recommendation where we change that condition from paying the $62,000 to a no-cost condition.
Okay. All right. So it would just be amending the condition, essentially?
Yeah. That's how I would see it.
Okay. Any other questions? And I can't see everybody because we still got the screen. So speak right up. Councilmember Wilkerson.
So, Council President, so first off, Councilwoman Cathcart, down in that area, there have been lots of construction going on, development off of that East Fifth and that pocket. So I could see where the prior development may have impacted this residential owner, but not what we have here. And it is subsidized low-income housing, proclaim liberty. They are expanding. It's right in the heart of the Perry District, right literally almost across the street from Grant Elementary School with the CHAP Clinic. So I would certainly be making a motion to waive the vacation fee on this.
Any other questions?
Yep. And we can only, can't see everybody, so go volunteer if you have that. All right. All right. Not hearing any more. So before we vote to approve the agenda, we've got a few requests to add to it. So I'm looking for a motion to suspend the rules for purposes of adding items to our agenda today.
Council President, did Eldon get the clarity he needed to waive the vacation fee?
I think we need to bring a motion.
Okay, all right.
And you could bring the motion right now to waive that condition, if you want to bring that motion.
Well, I did, but I will bring it again to waive the fees on this development off of Hartson and Celesta.
Okay.
Liberty Park Apartments.
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to waive the condition of payment of the property value. Any discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? Okay, so when that comes up before us this evening, it'll have that condition has been removed. All right. Now I'm looking for a motion to suspend the rules for a purpose of adding to our agenda.
So moved to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion for suspending the rules? Hearing none. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? Okay, the rules are suspended, and I'm going to start with Resolution 2022-0012, which is adding the appointment of Chris Smith as Human Resources Director to tonight's legislative agenda. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right. That appointment is added to the legislative agenda. Now if we go to the consent agenda. I think I'm looking, I'm going to group these into two different categories. So looking for a motion to add items 10, 11, and 12, three different contracts, to tonight's consent agenda. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? Okay, items 10, 11, 12 are there. And then the other one is items 13A, 13B, and 13C. Is there a motion to add one or more of those to the agenda for tonight? And just to clarify, if they don't get added tonight, when do they next come up?
They could come up next week if you want them to.
Okay. So they would come up next week if they weren't added tonight?
All move that we include 13A and 13B from the consent.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right. 13A and B are on. Is there a motion to add 13C to tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Councilmember Cathcart.
I don't know that it matters that much. I'm going to say no, only because it'd be nice just to have a final tally when we do this. But obviously, if there's more, we can add it later, if that's the direction we go.
Okay. Councilmember Wilkerson.
I'm supporting this because it is the development of a contract. We can't pay them a dime until there is a contract in place, and this is all that's doing. Funds, the amount of money will be discussed at SBO, but tonight is just about right in the contract.
Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand for me, if you would. Okay?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Four ayes and opposed nay? I'm going to, two opposed? All right. That will be on the consent agenda tonight as well. All right. All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda as modified?
So moved to approve modified agenda.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right. That is the agenda. And now, Ms. Fister, if you would, read the consent agenda as modified.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, purchases in support of the Concorde Basin Project of a pipe pre-order for HD Fowler Spokane Valley, Washington for 60-inch elbows, 60-inch Megalux, 48-inch HDPE Pipe 7-70LF, and 36-inch HDPE Pipe 630LF, $282,472. B, large diameter pipe from Corin Maine. B, large diameter pipe from Corin, Maine, Spokane Valley, Washington, $704,690. Number two, value blanket orders to approve purchases without bringing each purchase over the city purchase limit. To City Council for approval with A, C, D, W, Government, Vernon Hills, Illinois for technology, equipment, hardware, and software, $120,000 plus tax and shipping. B, Dell Marketing LP, Austin, Texas for PC, laptop, monitors, docs, ink toner, and mobile data. Hardware equipment, $750,000 plus tax and shipping. C, Software House International Incorporated for software products, including professional services, maintenance and support subscriptions, upgrades, $650,000 plus tax and shipping. Number three, value blanket renewal with Galls LLC Spokane for 2021 and 2022 police jumpsuit orders, estimated $150,000 per year, including alterations and tax. Number four, cooperative integrated medical services staffing agreement per RCW 39.34 with Spokane Valley Fire Department for the provision of an integrated medical services program for a three-year term with two possible one-year renewals, estimated $318,044.34 revenue. Number five, two-year contract extension with Absolute Drug Testing LLC Spokane for random urine analysis, drug testing, and results for municipal court and community justice services for pretrial community supervision and therapeutic court monitoring from October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2023, not to exceed $65,000. Number six, multiple family housing property tax conditional agreements with A-Foot Hills Project LLC for the construction of 24 housing units at parcel number 35082.4105, commonly known as 519 East North Foothills Drive. B, Liberty Project LLC for the construction of 24 housing units at parcel number 35033.1306, commonly known as 3027 East Liberty Avenue. Number seven, amendment number two to City and County Memorandum of Agreement for Waste Water Treatment Charges and Payments for 2022 through 2026, including an extension of term for amendment number one through 2021, $74,440.61 revenue. Number eight, report of the mayor of Penne Lake, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through January 7, 2022, total $3,249,377.90 with Parks and Library claims approved by their respective boards, warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $2,958,157.90. B, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through January 14, 2022, total $9,568,261.44 with Parks and Library claims approved by their respective boards, warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $9,155,734.90. C, payroll claims of previously approved obligations through January 8, 2022, $8,426,61.58. Number nine, City Council meeting minutes for January 6 and 10, 2022. Number 10, five-year contract with Serium Networks Incorporated Spokane, Washington for Cisco calling, contact center, and Calabrio support and maintenance from January 2022 through January 19, 2027, $137,221.58 annually plus tax. Contract total $686,107.88 plus tax. Number 11, contract amendment with outside counsel Beth Canar and Summit Law Group for representation in public safety, employee collective bargaining, and related labor issues. Increase of $75,000. Total contract amount $124,000. Number 12, contract amendment with outside counsel Tom McLean, who represents the city in arbitration matter brought by the Spokane Police Guild on behalf of Officer Chris Henderson. Increase of $20,000. Total contract amount $70,000. Number 13, contracts related to the Convention Center Emergency Warming Center, which was activated from December 26, 2021 through January 9, 2022 during a period of extreme cold weather. With A, the Guardians Foundation Incorporated Spokane, Washington for temporary shelter services, such as supervision, food, and portable toilets, estimated $170,000. B, ISS Facility Services Incorporated Doing Business Sanitor Services Incorporated Spokane, Washington for custodial and disinfecting services, estimated $50,267.43. And C, Spokane Public Facilities District Spokane for space rental and repair of damages, estimated $175,803.55.
All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right. The consent agenda is approved, is read. And we still have an executive session of, the request is 45 minutes to discuss labor matter, labor negotiations, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Perkins and Mr. Ormsby? All right. Then we'll set an executive session till 5:30 PM. If you're watching, we'll come back at 5:30 and either adjourn the meeting or extend it. And we are not anticipating taking any further action after executive session. So if you're attending the executive session, go ahead and look for the link in your email, and we'll see you in the next session. Thanks.
City Council is extending executive session for ten minutes until 5:40 p.m. No further action is expected upon their return. Executive session is extending for five more minutes until 5:45 p.m. Again, no additional action is expected at that time.
It is now 5:45 by my clock and we've finished our executive session and we're not taking any further action. We are adjourned from our briefing session and we'll be back at 6:00 p.m. for our legislative session. Thank you.